Tonight, Councilmember Bellinger will open this with a prayer.
Dear Lord, we ask for prayers for all city staff, for all city residents and businesses, for those who live in, work in, and care for our city. We pray for all the victims of the earthquakes, and today we particularly ask you to bless Mr. Canizares in his new position and prosper, and Chief Kiplinger as he assumes his role as interim city manager. And finally, I'd like to conclude with a prayer Jesus taught us, and feel free to join me if you'd like. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. I'll call this meeting door. If you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the open forum, and we have no one signed up for open forum. So we'll move into number four, which is the consent agenda. Any items to be removed, actually, from the consent agenda? Are there any items to be removed from five consent agenda?
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right. Have a have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right. We will move to number six, regular agenda. City council receives staff recommendations and public input on the following items, and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. A, I'll open a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately 2.7 acres, being part of a 64.17 acre tract conveyed by HGT Group LP to JBSC Development LLC, as described in warranty deed dated March 22, 2022, recorded in the real property record of Nacogdoches County, Texas. City planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Elena Hilton, city planner. The city received a voluntary request for annexation from Mr. Jake Crawford of JBSC Development LLC. This is, again, 2.7 acres located along the eastern boundaries of the city limits. Tonight is the public hearing and final action by the city council to adopt the ordinance approving the annexation. Just as a reminder, the purpose of this annexation is to further a 380 agreement that was approved between city council and the applicant for a future subdivision in this area. This is just a reminder of the schedule. So on January 19, city council adopted the resolution setting the public hearing. On January 27, we completed the service plan, which is included in the ordinance in the packet. And then today is the final public hearing and ordinance. Mr. Crawford was able to attend, but he does have a representative, Mr. Alton Hayes, here in attendance if the council should have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. We have heard this item on several different occasions, but are is there any comment from the public during the during this public hearing? Certainly, Mr. Hayes, you're welcome if you'd like to say something, or if you're just good there for questions.
Mr. Mayor, any questions? Be happy to answer if I can.
Great. Okay. See nothing in from the from the public. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Hilton or Mr. Hayes? All right. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Have a second. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, and I'll close the public hearing. All right. I would like to skip over B and move on to C. If I could, we will come back to C later in the meeting, to B later in the meeting. C, discuss and consider adoption adopting a resolution, neither support, no opposition, or denial for developers applying for Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs 2023 Competitive 9% Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Project name Ridge Brook Senior Village. Project location Southeast Corner North University Drive and Northeast Stallings Drive. TDAHCA application number 23066, Economic Development Director.
Mayor and Council, Larissa Philpott Brown, your Economic Development Director. We discussed at last, the last meeting, what low income housing tax credits are, so I'm not going to go back over that. I do have just some bullets here for for anyone in the audience that's not familiar with them. But they are, it is a way that the state of Texas encourages affordable housing to be constructed in our city. It's not Section 8 housing. It does provide a reduced rent typically for a targeted population. It's awarded based on points that are competitive within a region and provides a very long affordability period. We did initially have two requests for development. One of the requests dropped out just a few weeks ago, and so we are left with just one request for your support. This is Ridge Brook Senior Village. It's at North University Drive and Northeast Stallings Drive behind Sun Ridge Apartments. The entrance would be off of Stallings Drive. The developer is a nonprofit nonprofit entity, but they would pay property taxes. They're proposing 80 total units with 72 low income units. It's about a $16 million investment. The property is zoned B2 general business for the vast majority of of the development. There is a very small portion of it that is zoned R1 single family, and I'll show that to you in just a moment. If you look on the map here, it's the property in question is outlined in yellow. You can see Sun Ridge and University Hill Apartments there, just to the northwest of this property. And just to clarify the zoning there, as you can see, most of that is in that hot pink color, which is B2 general business, which allows multifamily apartments by right. Just the driveway would be zoned is zoned R1 single family, and that would need a zoning change in order to allow the development to occur. I mean, not allowed to access a multifamily property through a single family zoning. So your options tonight: a resolution of adopt a resolution of support, which would also include a $250 fee waiver, adopt a resolution of no objection, adopt a resolution of opposition, or take no action. Do you have that option? So with that said, I'm going to invite Mr. Russ Michael. He is with the development. He, I believe, has a little bit of information about the development itself for you all tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I don't remember being this close last year.
We didn't move it.
You didn't move it. But I I think that's kind of apropos for what we've kind of created, I think, in terms of changing things from last year to this year. We've gotten, my team and I have gotten closer to the city of Nacogdoches. We've gotten closer to the neighbors. I think last year, the process was a little bit too fast. I'm really excited to present this evening. And just for the record, I'm Russ Michaels with Texas Interfaith Housing. The proposal that we have here is really, I'll just flip through it. I did want to clarify a few things because we did speak to P and Z, and we've had a predevelopment meeting on the 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 right of way and the dedication, the public right of way, that actually would not require a zoning change. And so if Elena, if you did want to speak to that, I don't know if that would be helpful, but I do know that there's certain things that might, we might be, we might need to clarify. Again, this is a conceptual concept for Ridge Brook Senior Village. It's 78 total units, up to 78 total units. And that's our development team. We're all from Texas. We are a nonprofit. We pay property taxes. And, you know, the biggest piece of what we do is bring the social services and the management to the folks that we're serving, which are the seniors that are 62 and older. And then here's a list of a little bit of what we have here in terms of just 62 and older, two multi-story apartment complex, apartment buildings with clubhouse and amenities. And then that's the list of some of the amenities that we might be doing. And then, of course, that's the site. I think that was up there before. And then the site plan is drawn up. This is very close to what we what we have right now, what we've presented in terms of the to to P and Z. We're we're looking forward to doing a low impact design, coming off of the loop, and and developing it in a way where it's it's private. It's a nice community for seniors. They like that kind of community. And then to try to put as many amenities as we can in that four acres. And then here's the list of the services that we provide. I sit on the board of directors for resident services, and this is probably one of the thing that's closest and dearest to my heart is helping seniors and helping people that we build for. So we're trying not to just build up housing, but we're trying to build up people's lives. And the distinction here is that we put a lot of effort and energy into this. Some developers will come here and let you know that they get scoring points for this, and that's true. But we actually do it because we just do it as a company. And we're the largest provider of resident services in the state of Texas. We've got about 300 properties that we serve. We have 160,000 residences. We serve nationwide. And you can see on here, business classes, life coaching, anything that's an empowering service for seniors, cooking classes, yoga classes, things like that, we'll bring to them at the community. So this is something the city can be proud of, the seniors can be proud of, and we can be proud of to be your 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 community partner for the next 45 to 50 years, because that age restriction will run all the way until the the land use restriction agreement expires in 45 or 50 years, 50 years. We do get points for that. So it's very important that we restrict the land, and that runs with the land, the age restriction and the income restriction. I don't have all the the figures in front of me in terms of what the the breakdown of the rents will be. We are in the process of going through that. Our full application is due on March 1. Tonight, just as a reminder, we're here asking for a support resolution. That helps us move to the next stage. I wish I could say that we are kind of running a show here, but we're not. There are some cities like Lufkin that do have the ability to possibly beat us in the scoring metric this year. But this is a good opportunity for the city of Nacogdoches to put a step forward towards trying to have an impact with affordable housing here in this in the city for seniors. And I'd like to think that if the city of Lufkin chooses to not go forward with something, that that would default to this one. And so I think that's important that you know that. We do have some competitive sites out there down in Lufkin that could knock this one, keep this one from winning an award this year. Again, that's my name. That's my contact information. I didn't know, Elena, if you wanted to say anything about the meeting that we had, just to clarify that. You might speak more eloquently about it than.
Elena Hilton, city planner. So we did have a predevelop meeting with the applicant. And as you can see on the plan that he showed you, they were proposing either a private access easement with private utilities to access the property or public right of way. So we had that discussion about what the impacts of that would be. If that area were dedicated as public right of way, then essentially that would separate the zoning. And so that wouldn't have to be rezoned because it would become public property, if that makes sense. And so we just talked about those different options. And but we haven't made any final decisions. That would have to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the dedication of the public right of way. But that would help alleviate the requirement for zone change for that access piece.
And lastly, I just want to just kind of say how great it's been to work with the council member on those meetings that you set up. You guys have been great. The neighbors have been great. I was given some guidance with the council member because it's her district, and then also Larissa. And thank you all for helping me kind of navigate this from last year to now. It's been really helpful. I think one of the big things about this type of product is that sometimes you can't get the narrative out there the way you'd like, and sometimes it takes time. And we took our time with this. We took our time with the neighbors. We tried to do everything we could to communicate and have meetings. And I think that my feedback from the neighbors up to this point has been very positive for this development. We've moved from Maroni Drive. We've moved to an area that's zoned. We've moved to an area where there's low impact to the 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 road. And we believe we've got a pretty good site that's competitive. And so, again, I'm just excited to be here and excited to know that I came from where I was last year to here. And it's really been in a lot of help to the neighbors and the people that are here tonight. So I just wanted to thank you all for that, because Nacogdoches can be proud of that process.
Right. We appreciate your work.
Sure.
Are there comments from the public? Anyone like to speak to this item?
My name is Richard Bryce. I live at 4609 Kenbrook Drive. I've lived there since 1985. If you look at the map, my house is fourth from the north on Kenbrook.
I'm sorry. Can you can you get that back up, that map? I'm sorry, Ms. Bryce.
That's okay. You can see the row of houses along Kenbrook Mines, fourth north, which would be about the closest to this project to anybody in the neighborhood. I'm here to support this Texas Interfaith Housing project. I've lived there, I said, since 1985. When I first moved there, it's like living out in the country, beautiful fields and trees. You couldn't even see University Drive, nothing built up. But it doesn't stay that way forever. Something's going to go into that land. That land is valuable, and something's going in there. I kept thinking it may be over the years, a single family housing would go in, but obviously that was not in the cards. Feel that this senior family facility would probably be the best best thing that we could have in the neighborhood. Something's going to go in there, and I'm here to support that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Carolyn Davis, 2305 Carroll Street. I was here last year, too. I am here tonight to, I'm not opposed to this process at all. As a matter of fact, I support this. I really wanted to speak tonight, though, about the process. Mr. Michaels, Russ contacted council member Bellinger last fall early, and she immediately said, this is my ward, but it's the people that need to understand this and, you know, know about it. So we appreciate that there was sort of a grassroots approach, that we were able to meet in a small group. We asked Russ all sorts of questions, and he answered those questions. And then we branched out, and we had a Kenbrook entire, you know, development meeting or association meeting. People had plenty of time to ask questions. We were able to research. We were able to find out things like Texas Interfaith actually does stay with their property. They all, everybody comes and they make great claims about what they're going to do for all of the people that live there. But we had time to research and find out that they actually do keep their properties. They don't sell them way off down the road, and then somebody that from out of town comes in and buys it, and then the property goes downhill. So we were pleased with that. Every question that we had, we were answered. As you can see, it's not a room full of angry and upset people trying to figure out what's going on. And I just think that is because of the process that was used. And from the bottom up, we're fine with it. We think it's a great thing. And he hires local people. He's committed to serving the people. We actually were able to research all of this. They did great things with their population and tried to meet their needs. All of the things that were listed on the screen, they aren't going to provide. They're going to find out what the residents actually want, and then provide to meet those needs. Longtime school teacher seems like a great way to me to actually meet people's needs instead of just doing a set, you know, standard thing. So we, Kenbrook feels respected, and that our voices were heard, and think it's a great way to run. So we're looking forward to new neighbors.
Thank you.
Should you decide to support. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Ms. Bellinger held several meetings last year and this year. We at the Kenbrook Neighborhood met the last one. We had probably had 40 people there, I suspect, from the neighborhood. And after hearing the presentations of both this one and one that dropped out, she asked for a show of hands of who opposed either one, who who preferred the other, and who preferred this one. And it was pretty, it was unanimous, if not near unanimous, to support this from about the 40 people that were there.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bellinger, any any comments?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Let me see if the others do. Any any comments?
Just to say that I was not a part of this process last year. And Mr. Michaels, thank you for the work that you've done in going going through the process. And Councilmember Bellinger, for hosting meetings and and getting that work done to garner community support. I think I have to set a precedent and make sure that this is a big thing that's going on in the northeast ward, and I will follow Councilmember Bellinger on it.
Mr. Bowden?
No, I'm just, I mean, it shows you what, when citizens get involved, what can happen.
Absolutely. All right. We're ready.
And I want to say one other thing. The Ken, the the neighborhood, the Kenbrook neighborhood, and all of the people are just wonderful, and they're wonderful to work with. So I had to say that myself. So I'd like to make the motion to adopt a resolution of support for Ridge Brook Senior Village's application for the low income tax credit program to include a $250 fee waiver.
Did I get it?
$1, Larissa.
I believe so.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you. Thank you, citizens, again, for your input and your participation. We appreciate you. All right. We'll move to D, discuss and give staff direction regarding economic incentives to encourage downtown restoration projects. Economic Development Director.
Mayor and council, I am here tonight to discuss guidance that you asked me to develop in, oh, good, that works. In discussing a potential downtown incentive agreement that is on your agenda tonight, council indicated a desire to have some some guidance documents so that we could replicate this and be fair, and that you all would have a chance to discuss it openly. So I have this in your packet tonight. It is incredibly simple, because the goal is really simple, to encourage redevelopment of downtown historic structures. Fire protection is paramount to preserving our downtown district. Our downtown district is a special fire district. And fire protection can be somewhat costly in these historic restoration projects. And so the purpose of this is to develop an outline that would allow the city to participate in in the renovation of these structures and and help reimburse for the cost of fire protection. So essentially, this this policy sets out that the assistance would come in the form of reimbursement, up to $8 a square foot, up to $49,999, which is essentially based on some quotes that that we've seen and in talking to members of our fire department, $8 a square foot is is a reasonable cost today. We may have to change that at some point in the future, but today, $8 a square foot is is very reasonable for fire suppression systems. So essentially, in order to qualify for this reimbursement, we would recommend that the structure have been vacant for at least two years. So we're focusing mostly on our long term vacant structures. The renovation includes fire suppression. So we would love to support all of all of the renovation projects in downtown, but our focus is is on fire suppression. So it would need to include that. And then also that it is a large renovation, and it increases the value of the structure by at least 20%. All of these are are things that are open for discussion with you all tonight, though. And this is just kind of a starting point for for you all to consider. Some other just minor items. In exchange for the reimbursement, the downtown property owner must provide the city with a facade easement, which essentially allows the city to maintain the building's facade should the owner ever fail to do so. It adds a little bit more teeth to our existing historic preservation ordinances. Also, applications would be reviewed on a quarterly basis. We talked a little bit with you previously about receiving multiple applications and how much of a financial burden this could be to the city. Staff feels like, just based on realistically how many buildings we have that qualify, that allowing applications on a quarterly basis would would limit the city's financial exposure. Again, nothing in the policy precludes you from approving an agreement that's outside of, I say policy, these guidance documents. You're always allowed to to step outside of these if you have a project that's worthy and doesn't quite meet this. Economic development agreements are individual by nature. So we can't ever write a policy that's going to meet every single circumstance, but we write these guidance documents so that I can use them, and my staff can use them, and Main Street and historic sites can utilize them as honestly as marketing tools, so that we can go to our downtown property owners and say, the city wants downtown to be whole. The city wants to help you with your project. We want to see these buildings brought back to life, and here's how they are committing on paper to doing this. I've I've heard rumors of people saying, you know, the city was, it was just too expensive to get this downtown building project across the finish line, and the city wouldn't help. Well, this is documenting that the city wants to help. And so that is what we are presenting to you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions and and would love to open it up for discussion.
So as you get $8 a foot and about $50,000 total amount, that's for about a 6,000 square foot building, correct? I mean, that's the that's the math on that. So that'd be a 3,000 foot footprint and maybe two story?
Right.
So if we're getting into a bigger one, we may have to look at that, look at that cap.
Exactly, exactly. And and that's why I say we we can't write it to fit every single circumstance, but it kind of gives us some parameters to at least start from.
I'm sorry. Any any public comment? Any 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 thoughts from the community? I know the fire department would be in favor of suppression. Okay. Counsel, any any comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Bowden?
I do have one question, and it's on the two years in order to qualify for reimbursement. How and why did you come up with the two years?
To be honest, it's, we needed a number to start with, first of all. We wanted to ensure that we are focusing on buildings that are vacant first, that we're prioritizing buildings that are vacant. I am open to any number there. I I do feel like we should prioritize buildings that are vacant, so I feel like there should be a number there. But that could be six months. That could be 20 years. We have, we are, we have buildings downtown that run the gamut of vacancy.
So if I come downtown and the structure's been vacant for a year, and it's a requirement for the suppression, that would come out of my pocket.
It would. You would also, though, because council can can grant 380 agreements outside of this this policy guidance, you could still come to me and ask, hey, can can I apply for this? And I would bring it to the council, and it would be up to your discretion whether or not to to apply the policy to them.
And that would make a lot of people back off.
I I can't say that.
Makes a big difference in the funding.
It it does. It is. It is very helpful. We've also had buildings that have renovated without this assistance. But we've got probably, I would say, three or four that are hanging on that just, they need help getting over the finish line.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I think really the idea was just to incent people to work on vacant vacant buildings, maybe as our priority. But, you know, I can see somebody coming down to a building that's been vacant for a year and doing 20, 30, 40 percent improvement in the value and renovations. And and, you know, I think the council would certainly consider that, you know, just just as well. You know, again, it's all about how quick we can get our money back out of the out of the benefit that the property taxes bring.
I have a question, a clarification question. So is that how it would work for properties or developers who come to you and fall outside of the guidelines? You would bring each one of those to us, or do you bring all of those to us anyways?
I typically bring all of them to you anyways.
Okay.
I, and for the the benefit of the of the audience, I bring them to you in executive session informally and and say, are you interested in in discussing an incentive agreement with this? And if you say yes, then I proceed forward more formally. If you say no, then we stop. And I can easily go back to that person and say, this falls outside of the policy. I apologize. We can't, we can't assist.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Huckme?
So even even if these criteria are met, it will still come to us for for final adoption and?
Absolutely, absolutely. And at that time, remember, in a 380 agreement, there are performance requirements. And so you can can add or subtract any of the performance requirements that you would like to in that agreement as well.
Councilmember Bellinger? And Larissa, talk to us again about the source of funding for these projects.
So the this would typically come out of the Economic Development Fund, which is $150,000 that city council sets aside each budget year. We don't spend all of that every budget year, and so we do have monies banked. And so it would, and those dollars, I believe, Pam, correct me, are coming from general fund and utility fund? Did Pam leave? Sorry. Okay, so it does come out of enterprise funds as well as the general fund.
Okay. So any recommendations on anything that we would want Ms. Philpott to change? Or do we like generally the way this is structured?
I saw in the materials something about the type of use that the property is being developed for.
Yes.
Could we go over that?
Yes. So we typically would like to encourage the use, so it says special consideration is given to projects providing retail, restaurant, second or third-story residential and entertainment uses. So this would be trying to encourage things that bring visitors and traffic downtown. So what that would leave out would be first-floor residential, which we honestly don't have a lot of downtown, not very common. It doesn't incentivize first-floor office either.
Like a law office.
Like a law office, I'm sorry. But with that said, I think that that's an important discussion to have. You have a lot of downtown traffic in your law office, and I'm sure a lot of folks step next door to have dinner at Dolly's. So I think that's certainly open for discussion.
I don't have a problem, actually, with those limitations. I think that they make sense, but I just wanted to go over them for the benefit of-
Sure.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Brandy Cartwright. I had a question about the facade part of it. What is our current, how do we currently deal with facades that are not kept by the property owners?
Okay, I'll get that answered professionally.
Mayor, I'm not sure if I can give you the professional answer, but Brian Bray, you're a Community Services Director. So we, all properties under historic overlay are required to maintain the existing look of the structure through our preservation ordinance, which is under Chapter 50. And then we have various tools that we can use to ensure that that is kept, whether it's demolition by neglect or incentive programs like Ms. Philpott Brown has been talking about tonight, through historic restoration grants, Main Street's facade grant program. So we have other incentive programs to help those property owners maintain the existing look of their building. Did that answer that close enough?
But the reason that this would enhance that is, gives us more teeth?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I mean, the historic preservation side greatly supports a program like this, absolutely.
Good.
Because we are limited to the exterior, and so this allows for a much healthier investment from the city side.
Mr. Kirkland, would you describe kind of the legal side of the building?
So the current- The current ordinance prescribes how landowners can maintain and requires them to maintain it, but it doesn't provide any mechanism for if they don't, other than citation for violation of code or proceeding before the danger is the Historic Preservation Board under a demolition by neglect. Demolition by neglect, the remedy there is not to make them fix it, but it ultimately gets you into a spot where you have to demolish. The facade easement allows you to step in and invest more money, of course it requires that, but allows you to step in and invest more money and actually do the repairs yourself as the city, and then place a lien on the property so that if the property is ever sold, you get your money back. But it allows the city to actually invest to keep the structure intact, whereas the ordinances don't do that.
Good.
So that's the extra piece that you get here.
Great, thank you. Sufficient guidance from Council? Okay, good deal. Well, we will move on to 6E. Consider approval of a resolution creating a Chapter 380 Economic Development Program and authorizing agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and Kim Crisp regarding renovation of a building at 124 East Main Street. Ms. Philpott.
Counsel, this is actually the project that triggered your previous discussion. This is 124 East Main Street. This is the Watermark Bank Building. I think everyone is familiar with that building. It has been vacant since I moved to Nacogdoches 20 years ago. It is Mr. Kim Crisp. Kim and Angie Crisp are working on that building. They're proposing a first-floor restaurant with three lofts on the second floor. Per the policy guidance, the 380 agreement before you would reimburse them up to $8 a square foot, which is right in line with what a fire suppression system is for that cost for that building. Meeting the criteria, the structure certainly has been vacant for more than two years. They are putting in the fire suppression system, and we do anticipate the renovation would increase the value of that structure by at least 20 percent. It's currently on the tax rolls for about $100,000 right now. So we anticipate it will be valued much greater than that by the time they receive their certificate of occupancy. In exchange for that reimbursement, the property owner would grant the city a facade easement as Mr. Kirkland just described. And Mr. Crisp is here tonight to answer any questions you may have about the project itself, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement. It has been before the Economic Review Committee, and they did recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Mr. Crisp, you maybe come up and tell us about your project? We saw you on television last night, but we, now we get to see you in person.
My name's Kim Crisp, I'm a local electrician and developer here in the city of Nacogdoches. I've been here for 66 years, 90 days and counting. I hope it's not my last day. I don't know where to start, other than saying that the mayor and the city manager asked me to have a meeting one day, and I said, "Uh-oh, what's the problem?" And there wasn't a problem, it was they were looking for someone that would maybe take a project on in downtown Nacogdoches. So to be honest, I was on the fence about it for quite a while. I had tried, I'd actually made an offer on that building about five years, or maybe six years ago now, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I didn't buy the building. But they informed me that it may be for sale now. So to make a long story short, I decided that I might make an offer on it. One of the reasons that I decided to do it, I was about 50/50, they said there was a possibility of some economic grant money or some funds from the city. They didn't make a promise, but they did say that there was a possibility, that there may be some help there, and that the city would help me in any way they could to do this project. That was very encouraging, to say the least. Anyway, long story short, again, I made an offer, we came to an agreement, and we bought the building. Now we've got to revitalize it, that's where we're at now. I know some of, I was taking some notes there. Fire protection, that's one of the big expenses that anyone has taken on this project, and that's the one that we've talked about initially, about maybe they could help me in that manner. One of the questions that I noticed was the fire protection, the burden on the city, which also is a burden on the taxpayers in the city, and I know that's where most people have their concerns, as well as I do. I mean, we all pay taxes here, obviously. That is a big, that is a concern, and I did a little research on this. The city, the city obviously takes in income on water, sewer, and trash, and I talked to B.D. Rambin about it, and he gave me some estimates of what that costs. I'm proposing three apartments upstairs. Each one of those has a water meter. Each one of those, I've got my figures written down here, each one of those are approximately, he said the minimum bill is $65. That's just lowest it will ever be, and that's at 2022 prices. Normally, it's going to be 900, I mean, $90 to $100 a month. Well, you multiply that times 12, that's $1,200. You look at a, so we've got $1,200 there a year per apartment, there's times three of them, that's $3,600. But you've got to take into consideration that that building has been vacant for over 30 years. Now, if we use today's figure, and I know 30 years ago, it wasn't that expensive, but 30 years from now, it's going to be more than that. So we're just saying, that's a, that would be, we're right in the middle of that timeline, that should be a good figure. In 30 years, that's $36,000 per unit, times three apartments, that's $108,000 that the city has missed in the last 30 years. And going forward, if it's not used, utilized. A restaurant about this size, he did some, pulled some numbers from some on those, they're typically about $12,000 a year for water, sewer, and trash pickup. Times 30 years, that's $360,000. So we've got a considerable amount of money there that the city has not taken in in the last 30 years, and not going to take it in unless someone does something with the building. Some other figures I came up with, the property taxes. That building, when we bought it, was really a pile of bricks, rotten windows and doors, a dirt floor, and a roof that was leaking. That's what we bought. The valuation is obviously going to go up on it when we're finished with it, but at the tax rate that was paid in 2022, and the total tax rate is 3.34651, the city receives 0.51851 on that. I paid $2,231.41 of taxes this last year on that pile of bricks and dirt. The city received $1,240.70 of that, according to these figures. So you multiply that times, I think the building would be worth valued five or six times that when we're finished. You multiply that, 1240, times six is what I figured, comes out to 7440 a year, times 30 years, that's $223,200 that the city has not received on taxes in the last 30 years. So I guess what I'm trying to say, there's always, and there's sales tax, too, it's 8.25 percent. Everything that's sold in that restaurant, or store, or whatever it becomes, has a sales tax. The city receives 1 percent, and the hospital district, which is the city of Nacogdoches, receives 1 percent of that tax amount. One month, if we figure, they do 12,000 a month sales, which is in the neighborhood probably of what they'll do, I mean, they'll do like 45,000 a month in sales, times 12 is $540,000. You figure that out, there's a tax base there of about $324,000 for 30 years. So the city has missed all of that. So I guess what the bottom line is, these incentives to developers, yes, it seems expensive, $36,000 or whatever the amount is, $8 per foot, seems expensive. I'm a taxpayer, I don't want to pay more taxes. But in reality, that tax is going to be there, no matter what. The sales tax is going to be there, the cities, the citizens aren't, they're paying that every day if they eat in the restaurant, if they don't, they don't have to pay it. But that income, in my opinion, will reimburse the city tenfold. And so for that reason, it makes sense to me to do the incentives. I don't see, I mean, it's a no-brainer to me to do it. Just some other things I was just going to throw in. The restaurant's going to employ approximately 20 employees, about five in the kitchen, 15 on the floor working. We've had 19 different employees that work for us on the building already, that are, that's providing jobs for us, various other subcontractors, and not to mention building supply companies, utilities, anything else that it takes to do the building. So I know this is all just, I'm talking about the money aspect of it, but probably when it all boils down, the citizens are concerned about what it costs them, and I don't think it costs them anything. I think it's going to improve the funds going to the city when it's done. So for that reason, I'm for the incentives, and I appreciate them being offered to me.
Thank you, Kim. We appreciate you. All right. Anyone else? Anybody in the public want to speak to that item?
I've never started a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ann Keenan, and I want to thank Mr. Crisp for that wonderful summary of all the finances and the details involved. That is so eye-opening to hear that, and I want to thank the city, Alyssa, I want to thank the mayor and city manager for taking Mr. Crisp to lunch and putting the idea in his head. And it's a way of seeing that so many things are possible that we don't think, there's lots of empty buildings here. They should all be having someone, take someone to lunch and get someone in this town to take them over. I think all that's very possible, and we think that it's not. For 30 years, we didn't do it, and it sat there and could have been done at any time. So thank you for everyone who's involved in this project, and I support it all the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay. Counsel, any comments? Counselman Huckme?
Really, the only comments I have are positive ones about this program. We discussed it in executive session, I think, twice over the last couple of months, and if you've driven downtown, you've seen the improvements Mr. Crisp has made to that building, and I think it's a good investment for us, not just because of the taxes that we'll get, but because it helps preserve the other buildings around it in addition to that one. Fire suppression downtown helps everyone. And so I just commend you, Mr. Crisp, for the work that you're doing, and appreciate the revitalization that's going on downtown. And one of the, we were discussing how to name this incentive, and is it a, I'm losing my train of thought here, what did we, it's a pilot project. We're piloting this to tell other developers, "We do want to work with you. We want to help you get these buildings done and completed." And I think if the Council makes the step to approve this, we will show that that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fisher? Bolden?
This building has been an eyesore for years, and can imagine how many visitors we've had to look at that building, and why don't they do something with that building? And we want to thank Mr. Crisp.
So I also want to thank you. I love what you build and what you renovate, Mr. Crisp, and I also wanted to thank Alyssa for developing some clearer guidelines and for having the money taken out of Economic Development Funds. I think it's a very positive move.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir?
I have one other thing.
You want another lunch? We got another building. Can you come back up? Kim, Mr. Crisp?
We also like your Elvis impersonation.
Thank you, thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to say was, it's been a very positive experience doing this, and I don't get a lot of fun jobs. This is a fun job, and I've enjoyed it. I hope that it turns out to be an asset for the city of Nacogdoches, and I hope the people using the building, the restaurant people, it's successful for them. I think they run a great restaurant, from what I know about them. I think people enjoy living upstairs, so I'm just, I hope that we do a job that's, the kind of job we should do on the building. But I do appreciate Jimmy and Mario, they've been very instrumental, and Alyssa, they've been very instrumental in keeping me on track on this and keeping me informed what I need to do. And the city of Nacogdoches, the building- And the city of Nacogdoches, the building inspection department, they've been very helpful for me, so I, I do appreciate that.
Will Elvis be making any appearances?
Oh, do I get to plug a show here? We've got a show February the 7th, Old Tobacco Warehouse, 7 o'clock.
Kim, we do appreciate you, and certainly for your other two buildings downtown. They're, they're, they're great.
Yeah, we've had a good time doing it, so, yeah, thank you.
Good deal. Thank you. You didn't even plug Steve Bartlett either, you kind of left him out of the, of the thank yous. All right. Do I have a motion? For E.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution creating Chapter 380 Economic Development Program by and between the city of Nacogdoches and Kim Crisp for renovating 124 East Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Move to F, the funding of it?
Yes.
Consider an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1929-09-22 appropriating various amounts in accordance with budget adopted for ensuing fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, in an amount of $36,336 for the reimbursement of installation of a fire sprinkler system at 124 East Main.
This is just a, a budget amendment to fund what you just did. Anytime we have a 380 agreement, we'll have a budget amendment, because we obviously can't budget at the beginning of the year for those.
All right. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry. Any, any public comment on the funding of it? Any council comment on the funding of it? And do I have a motion for F?
Motion to approve F as it is written.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. We will step back up to B, I think is right? Yes, okay. And receive presentation, hold discussion, and give staff direction regarding proposed Zion Hill Historic Site rental fees.
Thank you, Mayor. Veronica Amo, Historic Sites Manager. And we are here to propose and discuss the facility rental fees for Zion Hill. So, before we propose the fees, we wanted to show kind of the market research we did when looking at the fees for Zion Hill. We looked at venues based on the, the type of venue it was, age of the building, capacity, as well as the similar area that it serves. Our proposed fees are as follows. For the complete building for a weekend, we proposed 2,400 with an $800 damage deposit. For the complete building for one day, we proposed 1,200 with an $800 damage deposit. For the complete building for an evening, we proposed 800 with an 800 deposit. And for the basement rental for an evening, we proposed $50 an hour. So, what that includes for the full building is the sanctuary annex. The annex is the area just outside the sanctuary, as well as the basement, the kitchenette facilities, and the entire building. For just the basement rental would be that multipurpose area in the basement area of the church, the kitchenette facilities. And with this rental, they wouldn't have access to the top level of the church. So, comparing the fees to the venues that we researched, we're falling about mid-range. With venues, there's a lot of variables to consider. Zion Hill's a pretty unique venue. It's a historic site, so it's going to serve as a museum as well. So, we took that into consideration. And this is where we fall as far as, this is a one-day rental, and this is in order from least cost to the most cost. And here on the chart, you can see where those fees fall as well. Any questions?
I think we'll start with, with the public. Any, anyone in the community want to speak to this item? Betty, kind of looking like you have anything to say? Betty, anything to say? Any thoughts? Okay. You worked on it. We want to hear, we want to hear your opinion.
I think it's fair and reasonable.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Counsel, any, any thoughts?
I have one question. Will there be any staff time required during these rentals? Or will staff need to be there? How much will it cost us for staff time?
Yep. So, we do have a site coordinator that will be onsite during the rentals, just to ensure that our guidelines that we proposed are followed. And they're, they're 17 and some change an hour. So, depending on how long the building is rented is how long they will be onsite. We're also looking at the cost of cleaning afterwards. When there's an event, there is going to be cleaning, extra cleaning, depending on the event. And those damage deposits will also cover some of, like, you know, or forbid, there's a, a big mess. Some of those damage deposits will be taken into consideration to cover that cost. So.
Can you flip back to the pricing schedule, please? Thank you. Yes, sir.
The pricing that you done your research is, that was basically for private companies, individuals?
So, a lot of those, some of them were nonprofit organizations. Let me go back to this real quick. Let me go back here. So, the Bride Museum in Galveston is a museum as well, and they have a facility outside of the museum that they rent out for weddings. And the St. John's Church in Houston is their heritage village. It's a church on their side. And of course, Miller's Crossing here in Nacogdoches, we looked at their church venue as well. So, it's a combination of private and then some nonprofit organizations that rent facilities.
But, but not city-owned?
Not city-owned. City-owned facilities, a lot of the ones we were looking at are larger venues that have a much larger capacity, so it was hard to compare. You have like larger civic centers that have a little bit more amenities than we're going to have, going to be able to have in the space that we have, so it was hard to compare those. But we did look at some based on like operational guidelines we were kind of referencing, and I can bring that research next time, but they are comparable. We're, we're falling mid-range, if not lower than some other cities are offering for their venues. But like I said, a lot of those civic centers, community centers are a much larger capacity than we have at Zion Hill.
One of, two of my concerns, I understand the fees for ongoing maintenance and continued improvement, but we don't want to price out certain organizations and certain groups.
So, the city does have a fee waiver program that nonprofits that want to rent the facility can approach the city and get some of those fees waived, if not all of them. So, case-by-case basis. And of course, we are going to work with some local committees and groups that want to just use the basement for a meeting. We'll work with them for that. So, we, we definitely don't want to price out anybody at, at all, especially these smaller nonprofits. So, we do have programs within the city that can help them use the facility. And then, of course, we're looking at partnering with a lot of these nonprofits. So, when we partner, that kind of waives that fee as well. If we're partnering with a nonprofit for an event, as long as, you know, we're listed and work with them on the event itself, that of course won't cost them anything, because it's also a program that we're doing as a Historic Sites Division.
And I like that. Like the basement, 100, I think you said 180 capacity?
So, 180 is kind of the sanctuary area. These separate areas, like the basement, have a little bit smaller capacity. So, we can't fit 180 in that basement. So, if that's, that site is, the area is rented on its own, it'll be a little bit different capacity. So, that 180 is the sanctuary itself.
And that's, say, tables set up without decoration, et cetera?
So, that is with the pews and everything. So, once the pews are in, I believe that 180 is
That's not the basement though, right?
No, the basement is between 20 and 30, and I do believe it's with tables and chairs in consideration.
Thank you.
How did you land on the $800 damage deposit figure?
So, we looked at another facility that the city operates, the Liberty Hall. Theirs is a little less than that, but we kind of, we compared those as well, the damage deposits at different sites, and it just kind of baseline any damages that occur. And if, if damages occur that are more cost than 800, that's where that insurance that we're requiring, the event insurance, will cover any damages that occur outside of the
You may not be able to tell me right offhand, but I'm sure someone here can. What, what was our cost for the renovation? What did we actually spend renovating the facility?
1.6 million?
There you go.
1.6 million.
So, how much of that was ad valorem in sales tax? I mean, how much was coming from our tax base? Was it all of it? How much was donations?
That question I don't know, so.
Mr. Huckabee, this is Brian Bray, Community Services Director. I don't have the percentage. There was a large donation that came from the, the foundation, and then the majority of, not all, the majority of the funds actually came from hotel occupancy tax funds. So, the, the majority of the city's investment, not the majority of the overall, but the majority of the city's investments actually came from hot funds.
Okay. So, that, that was really my question, because if we're charging, if we had spent a ton of our local funds, and then someone that lives in our city wanted to rent this facility, they would be paying to use a space that they paid to renovate. So, that was my main concern there. But if it came from hot tax, that's completely different.
It was, the vast majority of it is from the foundation and from hot tax.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
All right. Any, that? No direction needed from us, but we
So, we'll bring this back at the next council meeting to vote on and adopt as the venue fees.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will move to 6G. Consider approval of a developer agreement between the city of Nacogdoches and Plaza Street Fund 271 LLC for a waterline extension along North Street. Mr. Public Works Director.
Mayor and Council, Steve Bartlett, Public Works Director, city engineer. Have tonight for your consideration a standard developer agreement between the city and Plaza Street Fund 271 is an LLC. They basically own and operate the Freddy's Frozen Yogurt and Steak Burger. So, has a interesting cult following, so had a lot of Facebook activity. So, they are building a facility on North Street, just north of Parker Road, and there is not adequate water service there. So, if you recall, most of our lines are under North Street. Tech dot is not fond of us tearing up North Street to get new taps in there, and so we run into times where these lines are way too small. And there was a three-quarter inch residential tap there, and they need, obviously need a larger one for their facility. So, what we typically do is try to extend water lines from nearby crossroads, in this case, Wirthham Drive. And so, we have under, in, in our ordinance, in Chapter 106, the ability to address and for you to look at utility line extension policy items for both residential and commercial. Commercial allows the first 500 feet, or up to the first 500 feet. They're doing a little over, I believe, 250 feet or so in round numbers, extension to get from Wirthham Drive down to this facility. They'll add fire hydrant protection. So, the short answer is, they basically design all this to our standards. They bid it out according to state procurement laws. They install it, we inspect it, and then ultimately, we accept it. And then, they submit for reimbursement to us. So, this agreement is a time and materials kind of not-to-exceed approach to that whole thing. So, the not-to-exceed amount is $86,709. That's based on a certified estimate from their engineering firm, and we usually go with it. I will tell you, I think the estimate's probably high, but they'll shortly be bidding that project and will know. But we have left that, the number at their estimate does include a 15% contingency. So, we're hoping they actually come under that. They do not get that amount if they don't spend it, is what this simply comes down to. So, this will provide us a six-inch water line, water availability to extend to other facilities, added fire protection, so it's all good infrastructure improvements and does fall under our policy. Be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment? Okay. Counsel? Councilmember Huckabee?
This is the first one of these we've done since I've been on the council. How often do these typically happen?
Probably maybe twice a year at the most when they come up. Some of these kind of things are negotiated under a 380 agreement that Larissa would champion. And so, some of these utility extensions, HCH and the Hangar, for example, out there was, had utility extensions, but it was under a 380 agreement and not this. So, probably one or two times a year, and sometimes none in, in a year. We have, this is in our CIP, and we have a million-dollar waterline improvement budget, and it also says in developer agreements. And so, it allows us to use that fund for these, as well as me just going and fixing the water line that's necessary. So, there, there is funding there to do that in our annual budgets, a million that covers that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
How typical, how typical is it for cities to, to enter into these sorts of agreements with developers?
So, I don't know that every city necessarily has that. In the days of old, cities just went and built these lines for developers, and then the culture kind of changed to developers build lines. And so, we kind of have a hybrid agreement, I think, where we have the first 500 feet. Anything after that, you know, becomes their cost, even if it's a line that we're taking over for public use. So, I'd say it's honestly a mixture from zero to completely build it. And it's just, again, the culture's kind of changed to where developers foot a lot of the bills. In this case, the entire 500 feet covers the extension. And so, I'd say it's kind of all over the board.
And is that, just to clarify, is this a line that we will be able to use in the future for public use?
Yes, so it will address other properties. And that's kind of, and I'll say, almost unwritten version of this, is we like to see where it addresses two or three or four other properties, or it adds fire protection to a region, and somehow helps us function better some ways where we're not under North Street with utility service. So, yes, I think all the way around, it has a public good.
No questions?
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion on G?
I'll move that we approve agenda item G as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move on to H. Consider appointing members to the Pine Grove Cemetery Board and the Main Street Advisory Committee, and that's mine. On January the 25th, at our last meeting, we approved the expansion and membership of the, sorry, the Pine Grove Cemetery Board and the Main Street Advisory Committee. And we could not appoint at the same meeting that we expanded membership, so we do have one for each of these boards to be appointed. So, I would begin with, I'll make a motion to appoint Perky Basel to the Pine Grove Cemetery Board.
I'll second the motion.
Have a second. Thank you. Do I have any discussion? Okay. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. I would also make a motion to appoint Brandon Lee Rau to the Main Street Advisory Committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. That takes us through the regular agenda. We will now adjourn to executive session for the purposes deliberated regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code Section 551.087, and also regarding personnel matters pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. It is 6:38 PM. Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. We will be back into regular session after that. 551.087 and 551.074, we are returning from executive session, and we have nothing, no action under number eight, and so we're adjourned.